Good evening. We call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Bristol, Virginia City Council today, Tuesday, November 9th, 2021. Please join us for a moment of silence. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(audience clapping) Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming out this evening. The first item is council comments. Are there any comments from the council?
I do have something. So, I know that we regularly do, we do resolutions supporting different causes throughout the year. One that we don't usually do a resolution for, I don't believe we've ever done a resolution for, but it's near and dear to my heart, November is National Diabetes Awareness Month, and November 14th is actually World Diabetes Day. And as someone who has type 1 diabetes, and I've had it for 25 years, it's a, it's an issue that's near and dear to my heart. You know, there's about 200 million people worldwide that have diabetes, and that's about 22 million people with type 1 diabetes, and that's about 80,000 new kids every year who get diabetes. So, you know, it's a very tough disease for a lot of kids and a lot of families to have to deal with. And I just wanted to take a minute to recognize that November is Diabetes Awareness Month, so if you are at risk for diabetes or don't have it, keep an eye on yourself because you certainly don't want it. It's very manageable, but it's, is a strain on families and children, so please get yourself checked if you are at risk for it.
I may steal a little bit of the city manager's thunder, but I did want people to know that former city manager Bill Dennison passed away, and just I appreciate both his service to our country and to our city, and I would ask everyone to keep his family, particularly his wife Jackie, in your prayers.
Just one quick update, too. That's pretty exciting, and there was an article about it in the Bristol paper today is about a new bus line, the Virginia Breeze, which will be adding a stop in Bristol. So, it's basically going to be seven days a week bus line from Bristol to Washington, DC, with a variety of stops in between. I think that's a very exciting way to help us connect each other across the state for us going up north and for bringing visitors down here to Bristol. So, that's very exciting, and there'll be an announcement about that officially, I think, this Saturday, and that bus line will begin shortly. The next item is city manager comments.
Yeah, I just want to kind of echo Councilman Hartley's comments. Former city manager William Dennison passed away early Sunday morning. He started his career here, I believe, in 1985 as a building official, worked his way up to Public Works Director, became Assistant City Manager, and then spent the last three years of his service to the city as city manager and retired here in 2010. We do not have any updates on his services at this time, but as soon as I get those updates, I will let the public and council know.
Thank you. The next item is matters to be presented by members of the public, non-agenda items. So, these are non-agenda items. Procedure is, I'll call your name, you can come up to the microphone. Everybody has three minutes to speak. As you come up, the green light will come on. As your time is close to ending, the yellow light will come on, and then finally, the red light will come on when your time has ended. So, please be considerate of your time and each other's. The first person here on the sheet, this is for non-agenda items, is Ms. Krista Sutherland.
My name is Krista Sutherland, 1785 Lee Highway, Bristol, Virginia. My husband and I are both lifelong residents of Bristol. He's a deputy at the Bristol Jail, and I work for Bristol City Schools. We have four children. I wanted to speak tonight regarding the issue of closing our city jail and joining the regional jail authority in Abington. I want to be upfront, and I already mentioned my husband's a deputy, so we do have some personal interest in the matter, but my greater concern is about the safety of our law enforcement and the citizens of our city. This decision is being made with little consideration as to the logistics of implementing such a significant change, and without seeing any input from our police department or our sheriff's department, both of which will be greatly impacted by this decision and its repercussions. Not everyone understands the way our current system works. I've actually been in conversation with people in the city, they just don't realize how our system works. Currently, when someone's arrested, that is handled by the police department. That person is then taken to the jail, and custody is transferred to the sheriff's office for processing and booking. This allows our police officers to return to answering calls and patrolling our city to keep the residents safe. If our jail closes, this process will change completely. My understanding is that every single person who is arrested will have to be held at a yet-to-be-determined location, excuse me, while waiting to be picked up by an employee of the regional jail, which is about 30 minutes away. At a previous city council meeting, it was mentioned that per law, arrestees will not be able to be kept behind bars during this waiting period. That means presumably, the arrestee will have to be looked after by the arresting officer until someone from the regional jail, which is 30 minutes away, and that's if they leave immediately after the arrest happens. What if the arrestee is highly intoxicated, mentally ill, or otherwise combative, and has to be detained for several hours? That is a major safety concern for our officers. Not to mention that our police department is already understaffed and operating with an average of only six officers, six to seven officers per shift. What if there are multiple arrests during a shift? If each arrest will require pulling an officer off the street to supervise the arrestee while awaiting transportation, that leaves our community in a very dangerous and vulnerable position, since there will be even fewer officers available to respond to emergencies. Will our SROs be pulled from our schools to accommodate the additional responsibilities of our police department? What about our DARE program, which is currently run by the sheriff's office? And how will this work once the casino opens? The casino will inevitably cause an increase in arrests, as DUIs, drug possession, prostitution, and other crimes will likely increase. How can our already understaffed police department possibly handle that? This facet alone is great cause for concern for every single resident of Bristol, and seems to have been given little to no thought by the people making the decision to close our jail. Next comes the financial aspect. The decision to close the jail is being presented as a way to relieve some...
You can go ahead and finish up your thoughts. Thank you.
As a way to relieve some of the city's financial burden, however, according to the contract, we'll have to pay a per diem rate per inmate plus 10% of overall operational costs of the regional jail. That means that Bristol will be contractually obligated to pay that bill, no matter how much it may increase in the future, and regardless of our financial situation at any given time. This decision does not appear to offer the financial advantages used as its selling point. I think most citizens would prefer to keep taxpayer money in our city instead of sending it to another locality. The next facet of this decision that will have a great impact is the possible loss of employment for over 40 people who work at the sheriff's office. The decision to close the jail has been presented to the general public in a way that makes it sound as if current employees of the sheriff's office are guaranteed a position with the regional jail authority. That is inaccurate. The contract states that the regional jail has intent to hire, which basically means our deputies are guaranteed an interview, not employment. There are also no negotiations in the contract regarding comparable pay or benefits. Bristol deputies who may obtain a position at the regional, for the regional jail, employees may also be required to work at the Tazewell, Duffield, or Hayside facilities. Traveling that far for a job that may offer less pay with gas prices increasing daily, wouldn't be practical for most people. This will likely lead to several current employees relocating for the sake of sustainable employment, as there are few options left in Bristol outside of retail and food service. By the way, if our jail closes, this will be the fifth place my husband has worked in this area that no longer exists. Sandvik Rock Tools, Crowley Foods, Dana Corporation, Ball Corporation, and now possibly the jail. It's very sad how the lack of opportunity in Bristol continues to drive away good, law-abiding, tax-paying members of our community. Lastly, I would like to address the timing of this decision. Our city jail seems to hit the chopping block at the close of nearly every fiscal year as our city seeks ways to solve our never-ending financial woes. The option of closing our jail and joining the regional authority has been proposed and withdrawn many times over the past several years. The fact that this deal was finally pushed forward during a small window of time where Bristol did not have an elected sheriff in office does not reflect well on those voting in favor of this decision. In closing, Bristol, Virginia has earned a reputation for making poorly planned, short-sighted decisions, decisions that have had long-term negative repercussions, decisions that were often strongly opposed by tax-paying citizens, yet were pushed through anyway. For example, the landfill. Bristol, Virginia might be facing litigation from Bristol, Tennessee over that issue, which was strongly opposed at its inception in the 90s. The Falls is another one, nicknamed "The Fails" by Bristolians, and now we're facing the decision to close our city jail. This will be yet another costly mistake that Bristol lives to regret. Is that really the legacy that this current city council wants to leave behind? Thank you.[696.79][696.79](applause)
Thank you, Ms. Sutherland. The next person who signed up is Ms. Amanda Phipps. And as you're coming up, I'll just, one thing I forgot to add, just a reminder, everybody does have three minutes to speak. If you do have a direct question, and we do not have the answer, what we'll do is we'll work with city staff to gather the data to get the answer to you all in a timely manner. Ms. Phipps, thank you.
Alrighty. Well, my name's Amanda Phipps. Members of council, Mr. Eads, please forgive me because speeches are not my thing. I'm blunt and to the point, just like the facts and numbers. Numbers, for example, like 933, that is the average number of voters that elected the members of this council. 963, that is the number of voters that expressed disagreement with the council's decision to close the jail and send their hard-earned tax money out of the city. That is 30 voters more than the average that put this body in power. 44, that is the number of comp board positions that will be lost after the jail is closed. And finally, one, that is the number of additional long-term mistakes this body will now be responsible for if the jail closure goes through. Thank you for your time and attention on the only numbers that matter.[788.88][788.88](applause)
Thank you, Ms. Phipps. The next person who signed up is Christopher Capetta.
I've lost a lot of sleep over the last several weeks trying to come up with what I would say here tonight. Three minutes is not a lot of time to change the minds of a council member. I contemplated whether I would focus on misleading statements that were made to the media, or the countless duties and benefits of the sheriff's office that would be lost indefinitely. I thought maybe I could focus on the dozens of jobs Bristol would yet again throw away. I started instead to focus on the so-called intent to hire at the regional jail. As to say, what is thought of as sworn deputies duly, deputies' duties under a duly-elected sheriff would be the same. I thought about comments made on WCYB that the petition wouldn't matter. As to say that the will of the people that this council represents is not enough to sway the will of the council, and it weighed heavily on my heart at the time. We heard answers like, "I don't have the numbers in front of me. I don't know. That's a good point, and I haven't heard that before." Then I found pause and clarity and realized my speech was going in the wrong direction, because it's simple. The sheriff elect has voiced his objections to this decision. The deputies have voiced their objections to this decision. Numerous attorneys have voiced their objections to this decision, and most importantly, the citizens of Bristol have voiced their opposition. If these facts aren't enough rungs on the ladder to climb to the top of the ivory tower, then I, then all hope is lost in this representative government and in this body.[890.82][890.82](applause)
Thank you, Christopher. The next person who signed up is Dom Richardson.
Speeches are not my thing either, as I'm a DJ here in Bristol. Made a post-it note, no, three days ago, that's when I realized that we have a comprehensive plan for the Bristol, Virginia city. And it was the 2017 plan. I feel like, now, we can't, we won't be able to give this to people because the plan is already outdated. Our flex site for the Bristol location is now the casino, whereas in the plan, we still have those four scenarios. So, for our next plan, I would love if the city could try to pitch in and try to mail the plan to every household in the city of Bristol, Virginia. So, that way, we are all on the same pace, so we all understand what's going on. And for people like me, I love what's going on with Bristol, Virginia. I would love to see the city grow. The second thing I would love to mention, because of, because of going through the comprehensive plan, it made me think about the three historic districts in Bristol, Virginia. Euclid Avenue, the Solar District, and the district I'm from, the Virginia Hill District. I would love to provide you guys some insight on how we can improve these places. Now, the first thing, the first thing I would like to bring up is that as residents of these historic districts, we need to feel special in these districts, and we need to have a sense of community. We need to have better streets, better sidewalks, because I'm a walker, and better-looking power poles, because some of them are crooked, and it's not pretty, especially for tourists. And Bristol is a tourist location. The second thing I would love to bring up, as a walker, I would love to see updated sidewalks and widened sidewalks, because with, even on some streets that don't have sidewalks, when we make those sidewalks, we are encouraging a new era of walkers here in the city of Bristol, Virginia. We want that, especially for the downtown district. The third thing I would love to bring up, this is what's going to help us build a sense of community here in these districts. And not only in these districts, take note, these can also be used for commercial districts such as the Falls. People are preferring to go to the Pinnacle instead of the Falls because there is a sense of community there, whereas at the Falls, we don't even have a park. Bass Pro Shop had built a park at the Pinnacle to where people can go and build their own community there. So, here in the residential districts of Bristol, I think that it would be great if we had signs, just small little plaque signs on the corner of the road, telling people where we are heading towards, so that way, we feel special, so that way, we can maintain a community and make it look prettier, so that way, not only tourists can come by and take pictures, but the residents are happier living here at Bristol, Virginia as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1113.65][1113.65](applause)
The next person who signed up is Mr. Sean Mullins.
Hello, members of the city council. I'm Sean Mullins. I'm here to speak on behalf of attorney Dove Goodpastor. She's a local attorney, attorney practicing criminal law in Bristol, Virginia, and she opposes the proposed closure of the city jail. She would attend the meeting this evening, but she is not able to come due to her position. If the council would find that repairs in the existing facility are not fiscally sound, I would urge that the council consider opening a new jail within city limits. Not only the jail closure will create problems for defense attorneys, but she also opposes, the closure because of the loss of the officer's jobs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.[1196.28][1196.28](applause) The next person who signed up is Reverend Dr. Weddington.
Rings and peace, members of council. I come before you once more to talk about my concerns with the landfill, its impact on the community of Bristol. My words actually fail to convey what the residents of Bristol are actually going through and they're experiencing from these gases, so instead, I'm going to use the words of the four-year-old daughter of Lauren Lee. After warning residents to close their windows so that the dump don't get in your houses because it's making everyone sick in their houses, little Miss Lee goes on to share that she wants you to stay alive so you don't have to go to Jesus. Little Miss Lee is not alone in her wish. So many residents here in Bristol have to live this terrible reality that seems to be escalating without end. The intensity is increasing, as is the frequency and the reach. You need to hear that. Many residents don't recall what a complete and whole night of sleep looks like or feels like, and others are exhibiting signs of extreme respiratory distress, especially when it hits. Exhaustion and trauma are our present reality. We are living the nightmare of a little girl cheering for the hope, survival of our community despite its pain. This is an emergency, and I am here to plead with this council to see the situation for what it truly is. You have this power to not only acknowledge reality, but to do something about it. In fact, you have a duty. Page 24 of this city's emergency operation plan make it clear that you have the duty to declare by resolution an emergency to exist whenever the threat or actual occurrence of a disaster is or threatens to be of sufficient severity and magnitude to require significant expenditure and coordinated response in order to prevent or alleviate damage, loss, hardship, or suffering. Threat or actual occurrence, sufficient severity, coordinated response, and all to prevent hardship or suffering are the key words of your own plan that you need to hear. Many of the residents of Bristol are living under the nightly threat of this reality of being gassed in their homes. It is a severe burden, and they need help to deal with their present suffering and hardship. They lack the resources for things like purifiers just to take the edge off the noxious gases, and many want to run, but they don't know where to run, and many don't have the resources to run other than to shelter in space, in place. So, we need your leadership, and we need your compassion. You have it within your power to declare an emergency, and according to with my discussion with the regional director of the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, that declaration won't solve the city's problems, I understand that, but it would make it easier for the city to reach out to state and federal authorities, as well as other humanitarian organizations, to get help and assistance. You have the ability to do the right thing. Thank you.[1408.63][1408.63](applause)
The next person who signed up is Mr. Michael Cooper. And Mr. Cooper, if your item is about the landfill, wait just a second, because we'll get into that topic here in just a moment. That's okay. The next item would actually be the adoption of our agenda. What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Mayor, before, before we move to the adoption of the agenda, can I ask the city manager a question?
Yes.
So, I know we had several people address the jail at the head of our public comments. When is the next time that we'll be discussing the city jail on the agenda?
Based on an email I received today, I would anticipate that will probably be maybe at the December meeting, but more than likely, January.
I would appreciate it, you know, the earlier, earliest possible, because I, you know, we've had about 1,000 people sign a petition, and I think it would be good for us to address the concerns of the people. I know that we had had something go out to talk about the questions that people had, but I think it'd be good to have that discussion in public. You know, with the understanding that there are other localities who do have to vote on us to be in the regional jail, I understand that, but I think it would be beneficial for our city and for communication to the public if we do do that in the public setting as soon as possible.[1508.13][1508.13](applause) You know, and, you know, be that December, be that before that, I think that would be very beneficial to us, especially now that we can hopefully include the newly-elected sheriff in those discussions.[1524.83][1524.83](applause)
One quick question, too. Well, we have the second meeting in December as well, which is December 21st?
No. Last night, we posted that there will only be a meeting on December 14th. We may have to have a called meeting for some reason or another, but...
I just wanted to double-check, since it is close to Christmas, that second meeting usually falls.
With that being said, I would move for the adoption of the agenda as presented.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naif?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
The first item of our regular agenda is landfill update, and the first part is public comment, and the first person who signed up for this is Mr. Cooper.
May I remove the mask while I keep it on? We're good. Michael Cooper, 101 Metacrest Drive, Bristol, Virginia, 24201. I don't really appear before council, and I said thank you for this time. I personally have been affected from the landfill, as well as some of my family, so I, I'll be honest, I didn't understand it until it happened to me. And I understand preparations are being taken place by the city, and I believe Mr. Eads have spoken in public about that. My only comment is, you know, until you live it, it's different. Until it's in your house, until you smell it, until it affects you, it's different. I didn't understand it until that happened to me. And there's a lot of people that have, and I'm, I'm sure council's aware of that, and I'm not casting dispersions on any of you guys. I'm just saying, the preparations are being taken place with the wells, I think the, I think the timeline's somewhere in January roughly. If that doesn't work, we have to address it, and as fast as possible, because it does affect people, and it, it's real. It's people. This is where people live. I mean, that sign says Bristol's a good place to live. I, I'm not from Bristol, I moved here, and I want to stay here. And that's, I'm trying to be positive about it. Like, you guys care about this city, I care about this city, and you're taking, you know, the steps to prevent this from happening in the future. If it doesn't work, if the wells don't work, I'm just saying, try to take immediate action, because this is real, this is real everyday stuff. But that's all I had. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.[1705.53][1705.53](applause) The next person that signed up is Mr. Kellogg.
It's Joel Kellogg, 1204 Maryland Avenue, Bristol, Tennessee. Here once again, I need to echo what Mr., what Mr. Weddington said today. He speaks a lot, a lot better than I do, and he prepares a heck of a lot better, I'll give him that. You know, I want you to hear the story, too, that I, that I read this morning from, from one of our residents. Her name is Zoe. Last night, had to take her baby into the least affected room of her home with her two air purifiers and seal it off. That's how she spent the night. What is that? This is the United States of America, and these people are living third-world lives. This is unacceptable, it's inhumane, it's horrific, it is a nightmare. And I'm telling you, when I wake up tomorrow, and I'm fortunate, because it really only four hours it was in my house last night, that's a good night. But we have people here, just down the road from me, that never eases up. When is this going to end, and when are you going to make it end? We need help. We don't need promises, we don't need to get with the staff and get back with you, we need to declare... the staff and get back with you. We need to declare an emergency, and we need to get some assistance in here for our residents. How hard is that? How can you not understand it? How can you not see that? You know, I took a shower, getting ready to come here tonight. I opened up my medicine cabinet, the frickin' stench comes out. I opened my trunk to put a case of water in there for our protesters tonight. The stench comes out. It's everywhere. It is everywhere. My wife took the weekend off, and I, and we drove to Evansville, Indiana. You know what? All the way there, the stench is in the car. It haunts you. It comes for us. It comes for us every night, and sometimes turn to day, and it never eases up. We got people smelling in bluff city now. How bad does this have to get before you all say uncle and get some help in here? I don't understand it. I don't understand it. I know it's a lot of questions. There's only one, there's only one answer to this, and that answer is yes. We say uncle, and we're going to get you some help today. Thank you.
The next person who signed up is Mr. Dean.
Good evening, everyone. I don't do speeches. I'm speaking from the heart. I moved down to Bristol, and I've seen a beautiful future for myself and my family. Now, to sit here, knowing that I'm living my worst nightmare. Every morning, I wake up, you guys don't look at my children's faces in the morning and what they deal with every night. I have a four-year-old, I have an eight-year-old, and a 13-year-old. Every night, I go to bed, I feel this in my, in my house. It's suffocating us every single night. I sleep with an air purifier on, a diffuser, a CPAT machine. It's consuming my life. Every morning, I wake up, I have to air out the house, and guess what? It's again, as soon as my mental stability gets back, I get hit again with the stench. And it's a revolving door that's been happening every single day since I moved down here. My kids are being affected so bad from it. You guys do not walk the neighborhood to see these people suffering. The people of Virginia and Tennessee are annihilated by this and hurt every single day of their lives by this situation. It's an emergency. You cannot downplay it less than that. It is, something needs to be done ASAP. It, I'm just frustrated beyond belief. Believe me, guys, if you guys were in my situation, and if you lived in Bristol, you would understand. Not from anywhere else, not from out of town. It's easy to write paperwork, to write numbers, or put a monetary value on your citizens. We are not, we are not of value. We are the citizens that put you in that place, and we need help immediately. So please, I just beg you guys, start a Plan B for come December, December 24th. Hopefully, we get a Christmas present, and we don't get the smell, but please, start a Plan B, get something into action, because the citizens are facing a huge crisis right now. So I hope you guys could put forth effort into something like that in the future. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. That's the last person who signed up for public comment for this item. The next is staff report.
Counsel, over the past several days, I've been asked about declaring a local emergency. This is something that's been discussed internally with the fire chief on numerous occasions, and the fire chief in turn has discussed this with the Virginia Department of Emergency Management. And the Virginia Department of Emergency Management does not believe that this rises to a level of an emergency, because the EPA has advised the city and its citizens there is no immediate impact to health. Even if this city did declare an emergency, it does not mean the city or its residents would receive any sort of financial help.
What about medical help?
I know there's not many people in this room that like me right now, and I understand that. I understand that, and I have been down to where you live. And I understand having to make tough decisions. And I can tell you, I've been out there at night, I've been out there in the daytime. It smells horrible. I have never once denied that. This city, since December 17th of last year, has done everything in its power to resolve this as quickly as possible. We have immediately called in the experts when we knew that this was a bigger situation than what we had ever had in the past. Last Monday, I was on a call with the Bridgeston, Missouri landfill group. They advise this group, and many of the people, three people that were sitting in this room, that there is, it's an experiment in resolving this issue. And it's a trial by error sometimes. Sometimes things work, sometimes things don't, and you have to just keep trying to get it resolved. And we have done everything our experts have advised us to do. Every single time in the city's past that they have not listened to the experts, this city has failed miserably. We failed at the falls, we failed at the landfill when it first started. There is no reason this landfill should have ever been put somewhere in the middle of a city. And if there's one person in this room that does not think that I don't care about their health or their impact and the way that their quality of life has been over the past year, I'm sorry, but I have cared. I've spent countless hours trying to solve this problem. This council cares. We want it fixed quicker than you all want it fixed. This is not something that we should ever have to deal with as a community. It's not something we ever want to have to deal with in the future. And that's why it is, it takes a long time to take these corrective actions to fix it. And I swear, if I had a switch, I'd have switched that switch off December 17th, but I don't have a switch to fix it. Hold on just a moment. Declaring a local emergency does not get this city any more financial help. It does not get residents any more financial help. It does not do one thing other than just say we've declared an emergency, and it's alerted Richmond that we have an emergency in Bristol that may result in some sort of, that we may need some sort of help at some point. We recognize we need help. But the first thing we have to do is do exactly what our experts have told us to do. That's put in the gas wells, get the gas wells connected, get the water out of the landfill. Water is the enemy of a landfill. And those are things that we have to do to correct this situation. And it takes time. And it's taken more time than I've ever wanted it to take. None of you all should be here tonight, not because you're not welcome, but because you are smelling an odor that you should not have to smell. And I don't know what else that we can do to help speed this process up. We have taken the steps that we need to take to solve the problem. It just takes time to fix it. The Bridgeston, Missouri group waited 10 to 15 years before the first person took corrective action. We were on it the moment we recognized it was a problem. So this past Thursday, SCS engineers showed up on-site to begin connecting those wells. They began those connections, or they began the prep work for those connections that day. They worked on Friday, they worked on Saturday, they worked yesterday, and they've worked throughout the day. Those wells are in the process of being connected, and it's going to take time. Our hope is that this is resolved by mid-December. I have never made one promise to anyone otherwise that this is going to correct the issue. I do not know if what we're doing now is going to correct the issue. But what I do know is, the city is one time listening to the experts, and we have to listen to those experts. And sometimes, the only way through a crisis is to get through the crisis. And that's not what anybody out here wants to hear, but that's where we're at. And as Mr. Dean said, I don't know if he's here, still here or not, I hope that on December 24th, everyone has a Christmas present, and that Christmas present is a breath of fresh air. If it does not work, we have already contemplated what are our next steps. And those experts are coming up with their next steps. I've been asking for the next steps for months. We are getting ready to put out an RFP for a third consultant to tell us, one, if what we've done in the past was what we needed to do, two, if what we're doing right now is what we needed to do, three, if what we're doing in the future is what we need to do, and four, how do we, how do we resolve the benzene issue? We hope to have that RFP out shortly, and we hope to have results from that RFP back shortly, and get a third consultant to begin reviewing our processes at that landfill to tell us what we need to do to fix it. These things take time, and I hate it for everybody in this room. I hate it for each and every one of you all. I hate it for council, and I hate it for my staff. I recognize I'm the head of this organization, and I recognize that at some point, council may make a decision to move on to a different city manager. And that's okay with me, because at the end of the day, that's what has to happen, if that is, if that's what council decides. But I can tell you right now, I've, this council has been advised of everything that's been going on at that landfill since day one. There is not one decision that I've made that council has not agreed with me on after we debriefed them. And everybody has pointed their finger at me for a lot of these situations, and that's perfectly fine, too. But this is a team effort when we're trying to resolve these issues. And if anybody out there thinks that it's just me making these decisions offhandedly, you're mistaken, because it's been a team effort since day one, and I expect it to be a team effort until this is resolved.
Mr. Eads? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Eads. The next item on our agenda is the Bristol Public Library update. And there's no one who's signed up for public comment for this item, but we do have our staff report and Ms. Tanya Kessner here this evening.
As of today, Aaron Brockovich is in contact with us now.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Good evening, Ms. Kessner.
Holy cow. Okay, so, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. We're gonna, I hope we're gonna talk about something pleasant right now. It's the Bristol Public Library. And I am Tanya Kessner, the Director of the Bristol Public Library. And basically, let me see if I can work this okay. Okay, yes. Basically, I'm here just to give you an update on what the library's been doing. I feel like I want to continue to provide these updates for councils, both the city councils, so that you'll have information about our programming, our facility. And these updates, I feel like, are essential to both city councils to inform you guys how your support directly affects our community, and why the library is so vital to both cities. Thank you tonight for allowing me to speak on the Bristol Public Library, and I won't take a lot of time. The last time I addressed the council, we were talking about going fine-free for our community, which I'm really happy that we did. As of July 1st, we became a fine-free library, and it has been a success. We've had a 30% increase in juvenile library card registrations. Books are being returned on a regular basis. Fewer bills are being sent out, so, by 30%. Staff and patrons are customers essentially have more positive interactions. And parents who previously feared high fines are now getting their library cards for their children and bringing them in. And this is basically the heart of why we wanted to go fine-free. We want people to read and be informed, and we especially want children to have access to books. Reading's a skill that needs to be practiced for children to succeed in school and in life. Raising a new generation to succeed basically lifts our whole community. Some of the things that we've done this past fiscal year, well, most of it's been virtual, but we've also had some in-person programming. We've had the online Storytimes. We've had teen programs. We've offered programs for all ages. Curbside service is now a permanent service. And the ones that we have had in person, we've definitely taken safety measures for those. Our moon viewings are popular. We had over 100 people attend that not long ago, so that's nice. We're doing everything we can to do programs and offer things that the community wants. And our statistics do show that. Our circulation for Main and Evoque was up about 5,000 for, compared to last fiscal year. We had checked out 10,000 more audio books and eBooks, and of course, Zoom participation has gone way up. This year, we had 3,000-plus more Zoom participants. So the library's doing good. And one other thing that we've worked on during this time is the stairwell atrium renovation. This, we realized this space was not being utilized to its full potential, so we've added some small tables and chairs, and some specialized acoustical wall coverings to cut down the noise that was generated in this space. Both library patrons and staff have commented on how the acoustics are much better than before and less distracting. So now, as we, there's a couple more slides of that, but now, as we look to the future, I just want to give you a couple updates on that. We were able to get some funding from the American Rescue Plan Act, and with that, we're going to be able to update some of our meeting spaces. The J. Henry Kegley Meeting Room, the Francis Kegley Conference Room, the Children's Station, and the Evoque's Meeting Room will be more technologically savvy, and they will be able to, capable of handling virtual programming and meetings in a way that they haven't been equipped to do before the pandemic. All these meeting spaces will have new laser projectors, wall-mounted huddle cams, HDMI signal boosters, and these will make spaces able to handle a variety of meetings, both in-person and virtual. It'll make our meeting rooms the place, hopefully, that organizations and people are going to want to use because of the versatility and flexibility offered by these spaces. Okay, lastly, we have also added some new databases that people might be interested in, Heritage Hub, Black Life in Americas, and we have some new website tutorials on our webpage. One of the newest databases that we have, I think, could be important to the community, especially nonprofits, or those that are, know someone that's in a nonprofit business. And TJ's going to talk about that. He's the Director of the Jones Creativity Center, so TJ, if you want to take over the lead.
Thank you, Tanya.
You're welcome.
I am TJ DeWitt, Director of the Jones Creativity Center. And recently, we've gotten the Foundation Directory online, which basically allows nonprofits to search for new funding, and it's available at the main branch library within our walls. A few facts, we have over 700 nonprofits in the area, and 150 of them are right here in Bristol, Tennessee, and Virginia, so this is a big population. 9% of Virginia private employment is nonprofit, and that's over 10% in Bristol, Virginia. So this should affect a large number of our citizens here in Bristol. The Foundation Directory is unsurpassed in scope. Each year, they add 4 million grants. They give depth. They have detailed profiles of both grantmakers, funders, recipients, and different companies. And it's very current. They update it daily with new grants, new news articles, so it's a really powerful tool. Basically, it's a project-based search. So if you come into the library and you're set up, you can just start searching. So right here, I've asked about an after-school meals in Sullivan County, Tennessee. And it searches through the different funders and finds all the grants that match that. You can see, I did a real word search, and it figured out I wanted food aid, out-of-school learning in Sullivan County, Tennessee, just from that search I gave. And from that, it gave me 42 grantmakers that have given grants on those subjects, 138 grants and 15 recipients. You can click to get more detailed profiles, so I just chose the sentry link right here, and it instantly tells you those things you want to know about the grant funders. What do they fund? Where do they fund? And how much they give? And how much they give? You can see that the Sentry link they've given to Second Harvest, for example. You can see who they've given to and how big their average grant amount is. In this case, about $1,000. It gives you how to apply, any RFPs, giving limitations, all those things you want to know upfront before you start digging into it. And then it even gives you the contact info, how to reach out to the foundation. Now, since it's a library account, what you then do is you can save it. You can get those detailed profiles and download them as PDF if you use your own computer, or if you want to use one of ours, you can just email it to you, and it'll email all of those to you. And you can get a spreadsheet of all the grantmakers in your search as well. So it's a very powerful tool that you can then take back to your nonprofit and explore outside the library. At the library, the main branch, you can access it anytime. You just have to be on Wi-Fi. We can do one-on-one trainings by appointment. We'll, we're going to start doing classes and group trainings, and, oh, this one got removed. We did one on August, October 27th. And this is our contact information. Thank you very much. We appreciate the time.
Thank you, TJ and Ms. Kessner. I remember when my time was on the library board, I feel like there were some early discussions about going fine-free as a way to try to not discourage people from coming to the library because of the potential of fines, but, but to encourage people, to bring people back to the library. So I think your numbers show that, so that's, that's very exciting.
Thank you.
So thank you all for coming tonight, and if anyone has anything else to say.
Thank you for your time.
I do have a couple of questions.
Yes.
So I agree with the mayor that it is fantastic that, that you all have been able to go fine-free, because that's really what, obviously, libraries should be about, is education and learning and expanding your knowledge base. But, so out of curiosity, how much revenue did you lose from, from eliminating fines?
We, we really didn't lose any revenue because it was never guaranteed revenue to begin with.
Yeah.
We never knew what we were gonna get, and it had diminished to just about nothing as, I mean, it was not much.
So it was a negligible amount, because the people who owed money weren't gonna pay it anyway, and they just weren't gonna utilize the library.
Right. Exactly. You can't, you can't count on it, so it wasn't real revenue.
And I know you, it was a lot of information, so I apologize if you mention it, but, but how many books did you have that had, you'd basically written off that were gone that were able to come back?
Well, it's just been a few months since we've done that, but we've seen at least 400.
Oh, wow.
So that's really good.
And could you also explain what, I know what a moon viewing is, but could you explain what moon viewings are?
You know what? TJ can.
One of the efforts we brought forth, oh, about three years ago, was to allow people to check out telescopes from the library, just like you'd check out a book. And so, we started doing moon viewings right there at the library, right here downtown. Usually, it's in the middle of the month. One time, we did at the Christmas parade. And it gives people the opportunity, who are walking downtown, just to see the moon this time of year. We've been able to see Saturn and Jupiter, check out our telescopes, and just, it's really a joyful thing, and we've had people from out of town just come by and say, "Wow, what an amazing thing. I would have never thought of this tonight." So.
Well, that's fantastic. That's fantastic.
TJ does that program, so that's why.
I know that, you know, obviously, Solar Hill, that's how they got their name. You know, they were trying to watch an eclipse, them and Science Hill in Johnson City, I guess, to monitor the same eclipse. So I think that's, that's fantastic to be able to do that. And have you, have you all considered trying to partner and get something with Johnson City going since the Solar Hill/Science Hill connection thing?
That's interesting, yeah.
I don't know, I don't know what you could partner with, because it's the same moon there, too, obviously, but, you know, it might be, it might be a cool thing to do, you know? Because that's very innovative. Thank you.
Thank you all for the update. Again, I'm glad to see the fine program. I know occasionally I forget, and it saves me a few nickels here and there, as well as I probably need to get a telescope one day just to see, actually, Saturn rings. I can't, I can see it, but I can't see the rings. My question, though, was gonna be more about the, the part you talked about, TJ, about the Foundation Center.
Yes.
And I'm glad to see that. That's a, as you mentioned, anybody that works around nonprofits realizes what a tremendous resource that is for finding, funding opportunities that are out there. And I know years ago, Washington County Public Library had it, and then they discontinued it, so I don't even know where the closest place to go was unless you wanted to subscribe directly at a, at a very exorbitant cost for a small nonprofit. So, you know, and my question would be, are y'all trying to track in any way the organizations that use this? Like, how many grants they're applying for, the funding that they're receiving, just to see what the return is, what, you know, because you offer this service, what is now being brought in to help our community that previously people wouldn't know about or have access to how to apply?
Yes, we are, at least informally. Of course, we can't track everyone who uses it. But, yeah, Bristol organizations came to us and asked if we could carry it, and we've been working with Bristol organizations. We gave a training at the summit and had people, if they cared to, write down their emails, and we're planning on doing follow-up surveys and see exactly that, how many grants they found by using it, have they applied for any, did they get any grants, you know? Is this a service that's worth having? So, yeah, we're planning on doing exactly that.
Okay. Good.
All right. Thank you all for, for coming tonight. We appreciate the update.
Thank you.
Thanks for your questions and comments, too.
Thank you so much. The next item on our agenda is Item 3, Discussion on Amendments to City Charter Section 7.02, Finance. Nobody signed up for public comment for this item? Staff report.
Counsel, as we continue to go through the charter, and I anticipate having the ordinance on the next agenda item, there are some questions that you all had asked at the last meeting that we're still working on to get some answers, but we'll have those back to you shortly. One quick, just little cleanup of some language, it's Page 8 of your agenda, under Finance Department, Paragraph B 7. It states, "Submit to the city manager for presentation to the council." This is under, for the Chief Financial Officer. Submit to the city manager for presentation to the council not later than the 25th day of each month. A statement concerning the financial transactions of the city. And it continues, "What we would like to do is just add, not later than the 25th day of each month or soon thereafter." Sometimes, the 25th doesn't necessarily fall on a day that, that can be presented for various reasons, whether it's holidays or weekends, and we'd just like to be able to have a little bit of flexibility there to present that as soon as, as soon as we can thereafter.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone with the council have any questions?
Yeah. Could, could we add one word, this, or as soon thereafter, to kind of give a little more immediacy to it? I think soon thereafter tends to be a little vague. I think as soon means you're gonna try to get as close to the 25th, if that's...
I'll, I'll discuss that with finance and get back to everybody.
Okay. Can I ask another? Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, I was just gonna say, you know, I know what the intent is, but I think that language might kind of make it, you know, that you're gonna try to get as close.
So I have another question just about the wording on it. So, it says, "Not later than the 25th or soon thereafter." So, are those two clauses to that sentence in opposition to each other? Because it says, "Definitely not later than the 25th," but it also says, "Or soon thereafter." So should it, would it be better if it was "by the 25th or soon thereafter?" Or soon, you know, you see what I'm saying?
I see what you're saying.
Because it sounds like it definitively says the 25th, and it says, "Or afterward."
Well, I see what you're saying.
I know you're the, the legal expert, so I don't, I'm just throwing it out there.
Let me work on that language. I'll get, I'll get a draft out to everybody.
Okay.
If, if there's no further questions, the next item on our agenda is Presentation of Fiscal Year 22 Quarterly Financial Update. Nobody signed up for public comment for this item? Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. This is the finance update, excuse me, for the first quarter of fiscal year 22, data as of September 30th, 2021. This data is prepared on a cash basis. Revenues the city received and expenditures the city paid, and this is unaudited data. The city fund summary, general fund summary with a budget of $56 million. Revenues of $12.3 million, 22% of the budget. Expenditures of $14.5 million, 26% of budget, for a fund deficit at September 30th of $2.1 million. This is not unusual for the first quarter of the fiscal year. The city normally operates at a deficit for the first quarter each year due primarily to the real estate personal property due date, which is approaching December 5th of each year. Solid waste disposal, fund summary with a budget of $7.4 million. Revenues of $1.8 million, 25% of budget. Expenditures of $1.3 million, 18% of budget, for a fund surplus at September 30th of Local capital projects fund with a budget of $172,000. No activity in that fund as of September 30th. Vehicle purchases and fire department PPE purchases are in process now. Those had not been expended as of September 30th. Our state and federal capital, funded capital projects with a budget of $6.55 million. Revenues of $13,174. Expenditures of $19,434 for a small fund deficit there. These projects in that fund are in the early stages for the fiscal year. Transit fund with a budget of $570,000, $577,900. Revenues of $123,677. Expenditures of $128,316 for a small fund deficit in our transit fund. That's made up of federal and state receivables. We expend those monies first and then get reimbursed for those. Here's the general fund revenue summary of the $12.388 million received by our general fund. $7.46 million is from local sources. $4.13 million is from state sources. $796,786 is from federal sources. That's the revenue composition for our general fund. And this is what the general fund revenue looks like, what monies the general fund has received. The blue, our local revenue, is at 60% of funds received through, I said, June 30th, September 30th, and it, for the year, is 65% of budget. The state revenue there is shown in red at 33%. It is 28% of the budget. Federal revenue is in green at 7%, and it is 7% of the budget. And as we get further into the fiscal year, you will see the blue portion, the local portion, The general fund revenue report, general property taxes at 5%. Just want to add, if all items were earned evenly throughout the year, the benchmark at the first quarter would be 25%. So once again, general property taxes at 5%. This is not unusual as we approach the December 5th tax deadline. Other local taxes, above the benchmark at 29%. Permits and privilege fees at 15%. This is a negative variance, and it's due to permits and inspection fees below the target budget percentage. We believe this is still a COVID-19 impact here, and we're gonna monitor that as we progress, as we progress throughout the year. Fines and forfeitures is at 31%. Revenue from money and property is at 21%. Charges for services is at 29%. Miscellaneous revenue, 52%, and that is due to a large one-time revenue that is received in the fall of the fiscal year. Recovered costs at 35% due to insurance recoveries and also a flow-through payment that was received and expended for one local business. State revenue is at 26%. Federal revenue is at 19%, slightly below the benchmark, but that is offset by a reduction in expenditures as well, as well. That's just some grant expenditures that have not been expended yet. Our financial data graphs, fiscal year 18 is shown in orange, fiscal year 19 is shown in gray, fiscal year 20 in yellow, fiscal year 21 is in red, and fiscal year 22 is shown in, in green. Our local sales and use tax, you can see up from all periods presented. Consumer utility taxes have held steady across the periods. Cigarette taxes are down slightly from fiscal year 21 and 20, just slightly there. Lodging taxes are down slightly from fiscal year 20 but are actually up compared to fiscal year 18, 19, and 21, the first quarter end of the fiscal year. Meals taxes are up from all years presented. So the city is, is seeing recovery in the meals and lodging tax revenue items here. It's always interesting to me to look at the shape of the lodging and the meal taxes. They are very, very similar. This is what our sales tax revenue with a budget of $3.85 million looks like as it is received by the city. The blue line is the three-year average there, and the orange is current year data. Sales tax runs two months behind for the city, meaning that revenues collected in September were actually for the month of July. This is the city's meals tax with a budget of $5.2 million as it is received by the city. This is what it looks like as it comes in each month, and meals tax is the largest of the general fund's other local taxes. September collections here are for the month of August. This is what our lodging tax with a budget of $1.2 million looks like as it is received by the city. September collections are for the month of August in this revenue category. July and August receipts were above the three-year average, with September being right in line with that three-year average. This is our target revenue report. The previous graphs show actual-to-actual comparison between fiscal years. This report shows the fiscal year 22 budget-to-actual comparison. Total positive variances here, $835,643, driven primarily by the positive sales, lodging, and meals tax variances. Sales and use tax with a positive budget variance of $176,000. Consumer utility tax has a slight positive budget variance. Taxes on records has a positive budget variance of $40,598. Cigarette taxes has a slight positive budget variance. Lodging taxes has a positive budget variance there of $196,280. Meals tax has a positive budget variance, significant positive budget variance there, Electric consumption tax has a slight negative budget variance. Admissions tax has a positive budget variance. Even though that's a small dollar amount for the city, it is nice to see recovery here in this area due to refunds. I think council will remember, last year at one point, that revenue item actually went negative. Communications tax has a negative budget variance of $9,798. We've reduced that budget for fiscal year 22 to be more in line with actuals for previous years. We'll continue to monitor that as we progress throughout the fiscal year. General fund expenditure summary for the year. Once again, if, if expenditures were earned evenly throughout the year, the benchmark at the end of the first quarter would be 25%. You can see here, government administration is at 21%. Judicial administration, 23%. Public safety is at 20%. Public works, 23%. Health, welfare, and social services, 23%. Education here is at 65%, a significant budget variance there, and this is due entirely to the federal COVID-19 monies that the school receives. These monies are reimbursed, so the initial expenditure is paid from local monies, with the federal revenue coming in shortly thereafter. I've discussed with Ms. Jones, the school's chief financial officer. They do not anticipate that's gonna cause a budget appropriation issue this year. It, just as that federal revenue begins to come in, then they can spend, they're not having to get reimbursed all local money upfront. So that looks like a big percentage there, but it is explainable. Parks, Recreation, and Cultural, 23%. Community Development, 16%. Nondepartmental is at 32%, and that's up due because our insurance payments are paid entirely in the first quarter of the fiscal year. Our debt is at 9%. That's down just based on, per the benchmark, based on when our debt is due through the year. Transfers are at 16%. So total expenditures in our general fund are at 26% of budget, but you can see that the categories are actually below the benchmark, with the exception of the schools and the insurance payments. the insurance payments. This is what the general fund expenditures look like, how the city's money is spent. The data on the left is the actual expenditures, and the data on the right is budgeted expenditures. Actual general fund expenditures, education 30%, public safety 24%, health, welfare, and social services 14%, public works 9%, government administration 4%, parks, recreation, and cultural 4% as well, transfers 3.91%, judicial administration 3%, city development 1%, 5% non-departmental, right at 2%, community development 1%. What these two images show, hopefully, is that with the exception of education discussed in the previous slide, the expenditure composition for our general fund is right in line with, with our budget figures. Transitioning to solid waste, disposal revenue is at 25%, right in line with the budget benchmark. Collection revenue is at 32%, it's up slightly due to a fiscal year '21 revenue that was deposited in fiscal year '22. Non-operating revenue is at 4% because the transfer from the general fund has not yet been recorded. Disposal expenditures are at 14%, and this is down for a couple of reasons, salary vacancies, and also because the significant capital expenditures, mainly the new well work and the odor mitigation work in the fund, have not been paid in the first quarter. Collection expenditures are at 17%, down due primarily to the timing of certain lease payments. Debt expenditures are at 27%, that's based on the timing of when those payments are due. Keep in mind that debt for our solid waste disposal fund is 30% of the original budget. The operating cash balance at September 30th, 2021 was $20,192,901. One year ago, at September 30th, 2020, that cash balance was $16.6 million. Two years ago, at September of 2019, that was $13.5 million. Three years ago, at $10.7 million. The reserve balance has $1.44 million in, in the reserve. Debt service reserve has $3.06 million. Solid waste disposal fund investment has $21,923. That is left over from the previous 2018 refinance, and those monies are budgeted and will be expended to pay solid waste debt in fiscal year '22. The TAN information is presented, we present that every quarter. You can see in fiscal year '17, $1.7 million was borrowed in the fall only of that year. Fiscal year '16, $2.4 million. Fiscal year '15, $6.7 million, and in fiscal year '14, $7.6 million was borrowed to pay operating expenditures for the city of Bristol. So hopefully, what this, this slide shows is the progress that the city has made in not only reducing its reliance on the TAN, but having a robust cash balance for the city's operations. And this graph shows the city's cash balance at month-end. The green line is the current year, the red line is fiscal year '21, the gray line is fiscal year '20, the orange line is fiscal year '19, and the blue line is fiscal year '18. You can see the trend here of the city's cash balance. Keep in mind, this is the balance at month-end, it does vary during the month, but you can see the curve here. Also, you can see that it was below $5 million at July 2017, at the beginning of fiscal year '18. And counsel, this concludes the presentation of the financial data as of September 30th, 2021. There are two slides that counsel normally sees in a quarterly update that aren't included here. One is the Fall's update. Not much activity has occurred in the first quarter, so more relevant information will be shown in the second quarter. And also, the debt presentation plan will be shown in the second quarter. It's not changed since August, since counsel last saw it, so I just didn't include it. So thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
I have, I have a couple of things. So first off, I just want to thank, thank the CFO and, and your department for putting this together and presenting it in different ways with different graphs for, you know, some of us up here love the, love the bar graphs, and some of us up here love the pie graphs, and some of us just want to see a big spreadsheet. So, you know, I appreciate you giving it to us in different, different options. You know, I will say, you know, first off, obviously, the big headline is that, that $20 million, you know, on hand is a, is a big step, and I think I say this probably to you every quarter when we do this, that, you know, we have come a very long way, you know, not even since 2018, since when I got on here, but, you know, from 2014 and 2015, we've come a very, very long way since, you know, Mr. Hartley and Mr. Hubbard, you know, got onto council. So, so, you know, that's a big deal. That's a very big deal. I had a, I had a question or two. On the miscellaneous, you said there's one large one-time revenue that, that took us to 52%? I'm sure you've told me that before, but I've slept since then. What is, what is that?
That's the payment in lieu of taxes the city receives in the fall from BVU.
The pile of payment, okay. I had another question. At the beginning, you said that we were at, I think, 5% for property tax because we're coming up on the 20, on the December 5th deadline for pay, payment of property taxes. I think I'd brought this up maybe a couple of years ago. Is there a reason, I know a lot of localities, you know, our real estate taxes, you know, come due every six months, they're paid, you know, through people's mortgages. Our property taxes, like for cars and stuff, only come due every December 5th, and it's only a one-time, once-a-year thing. I know a lot of localities break that up into two six-month payments also. Do you know why the city of Bristol only does one yearly payment for personal property?
And I would actually defer you to the Commissioner of Revenue or the Treasurer about that. And, and I'm not aware, doesn't mean, I'm not, I'm not aware of the personal property being split, but, but I could be wrong as the rain about that, so, so let me get that information from them.
Yeah, because I know, I know we only pay it here once a year, but I know, you know, a lot of other independent cities, I think Norfolk, Newport News, they do twice a year, which, I don't know how that would, how that would affect, you know, our, our revenue flow, but, you know, from a perspective of, you know, helping people, I think it might be, I don't know if that's something we could feasibly do, but I think it might be good if we could break those payments up for people.
Okay. I will, I will ask them about that.
Well, I just wanted to say overall, thank you again for everything, the work you and your department do. You know, Mr. Osborne mentioned the progress we've made over the past several years, and specifically, I'll touch on over the past 18 months. You know, obviously, we as a city collect tax revenue that we need for our expenses from stores, restaurants, and hotels. And in March of 2020, spring of 2020, you know, you couldn't eat at a restaurant, people weren't traveling, so it was a little different trying to budget for that. And to see the numbers now, it, it's clear that while COVID-19 is still very real and exists, people do want to get out and travel and eat and shop. So it's encouraging, I think, went to see those numbers, to see what, what's happening in the city. We've had several restaurants that, that closed completely last year that have reopened, and some new things come online, so that's good, especially for our small businesses in downtown Bristol. So I'm, I'm encouraged by that. If there's no further questions on that, the next item is our consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the council?
I move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a, a motion and a second for the consent agenda. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naif?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Upstein.
Farnum?
Yes. That's the last item on our agenda. If there's no further business, we stand adjourned.